For which it stands, human nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Most of the meeting has been satisfied with the words of chapter two three one P L. By advertising home news, reviewing, notifying, central publishing company and Starlet posting of bulletin, posting on bulletin board and following with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Kozinski.
Here.
Mr. Foley.
Here.
Mr. Esposito.
Here.
Mr. Corrigan.
Here.
Mr. Bella.
Here.
And up, Mr. Emma. And Mr. Mr. Barry, the wood planner is on the phone. He's calling into the meeting. He's here.
Hey, thank you. All um. One application has been postponed for tonight. I believe.
Thank you.
So.
Inuation. Yeah, so the application twenty-two dash twelve Chase Buscemi, which was heard last month. We started it, the address is Twenty Ridge Avenue. I was building retaining wall in the fence. We carried it to tonight because he had to do some new survey work, which hasn't come back yet. So unless the board has any objection, we'll continue that to next month with no further notice. So if anyone is here on the Chase Buscemi application, Twenty Ridge Avenue not be heard tonight will be heard next month. What's the date for August twenty?
August twenty.
August twenty-fourth at this time. And Mr. Chairman, the other holdover we have, which I know we've been holding over for a while, is application twenty dash twenty-three Muffy Lopez at ten ninety-four Borden Town Avenue. As me recall, some of the improvements were under the JCP now power line, which is in violation or easement. Actually, I just had email with her and the JCP and all representative today. They have agreed on what improvements can stay, what needs to go. She submitted a revised survey to JCP now. Once we get their okay to that, then we'll have a resubmit the survey and relist it. And hopefully that'll be next month. But again, if you're here on the Muffy Lopez ten ninety-four Borden Town Avenue, that is being held over to next month, August twenty-fourth, without further need for notice. That's all the holdovers, Mr. Chairman.
Right, thank you. Yeah, the applications will here tonight will go twenty-two sixteen fourteen and seven in that order. So we'll start off with Stanley Cafaro, twenty-two sixteen. Farrell.
Even Mr. Farrell, please raise your right hand. You swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
And you just got to keep your voice up so it picks up on the microphone.
I think.
Yeah. And give us your name, spell your last name.
My name is Stanley Cafaro, C A F A R O.
Thank you. And just simply tell the board what you're doing, your home, why you're here tonight.
I'm trying to install a freestanding carport by the side of my existing garage between myself and my neighbor.
And Mr. Chairman, the zoning officer submitted his report and the variances are needed for the carport are. It's encroaching in the side yard setback, which is part of the five feet and the carport will be at one and a half feet. There's supposed to be a separation between any accessory structure, which is the carport and the Alsa ten feet and one point five feet is also required for that. And then building coverage is supposed to be twenty, it will be twenty-three percent.
Thank you. Could you tell us what you're going to be using the car port for? Is it going to be everyday use or?
Everyday use for my existing car. It's just keep it out of the sun and the rain. It's just an extra space for one of my cars.
Now, I was looking online, I saw, I guess you had in the past a tent carport there?
Yes, I took that down.
Okay, and I see you have gravel there. Is that can be paved at all or no?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be on the ground.
Okay. Any other questions from the board members here?
Does this carport have sidewalls or is it just a roof?
Just a roof.
But is it made out of like sheet metal?
Yes, it's steel and sheet metal. So meets the wind requirements, the snow requirements and the wood instead, you know, they require.
That will be bolted to the ground or?
Yes, it's gonna be.
Concrete or whatever?
It's gonna be on six by sixes actually.
Six by six piece concrete?
No, it's actually six by six lumber, but it's gonna be dug into the ground and it's gonna be bolted to it.
I see. Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Is it attached to the house?
No, it's freestanding.
Okay. And it's eight by twelve?
No, it's gonna be, it's ten by twenty by seven feet high.
It says there's an eight on the drawing.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Open up to the public. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application at this time? Make a motion to close it to the public?
I'll move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Board members, what's your pleasure on this application?
I make a motion, we accept it as read. Approved as read.
Second.
Roll call, John.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Sevili.
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Emma.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
So your application is approved, next month we'll adopt the written resolution and then you can go get your permits.
Okay, thank you very much.
Welcome, have a good evening.
Have a great.
Hey, next app, next application twenty-two fourteen Butch Spicer.
Good evening, Mr. Spicer, same routine as the last guy. Raise your right hand, please. You swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please give us your names, spell your last thing for the record.
Well, my real name is Clinton Spicer, Gabis Butch, last name S P E I S E R.
So again, just tell the board what you're doing at your home.
We're replacing, I like a porch on the side of my house, but want to do a little addition, a closing addition, the porch is not closed in, it's gonna be around eight by twelve, which is pretty close to what's there now, but it's been closed in. And it's gonna be a pantry class mudroom.
Oh, let me see. Right now you got an eight by twelve. Um.
It's like a deck, it was there.
Deck, okay, now you're gonna take that down and just replace it with a enclosed structure, basically.
Correct.
Okay. And I guess the side in the house is gonna be the same as the rest of the home? The siding of the house?
Yes, it's gonna match the rest of the home, yes.
Any other questions from the board here?
Chairman, the the variances that are needed for the building is side yard setback, ten feet is required, seven feet is proposed, and then in the zone you have to have both sidebar, sorry, both side yards must equal twenty-five feet and this will be at twelve feet.
Well, let me ask you, would this be grandfathered in any way since he already has a structure there?
So there's a, there's an odd quirk in the law and the second he knocks it down, it could be far nonconforming goes away. So that's why, yeah, so that's why it needs new variances if it was not there before. Again, practically, the board takes into consideration that there was a structure there before and essentially he's just rebuilding it and closing.
Actually.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, for the board's information, this is gonna be wider than the existing.
Yes.
It's approximately four to five feet wide, your existing stairs and overhang, and this is gonna be eight, that's proposed?
Correct, it'll be wider.
It's gonna be wider, so it wouldn't be grandfathered because it's a larger structure than what's there now.
So the additional four feet would cause the issue.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board members? Open up to the public, anybody from the public wish to speak on this application?
Move, we close the public portion.
Your second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Members, what would you like to do with this application?
Chairman, I move that the application would be approved, second.
Go on, roll call, please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Sevili.
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski.
Yes.
Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Esposito.
Yes.
Emma.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Your application was approved and next month we'll adopt the written resolution, you can go pull your building permits and start.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I'll be next.
A glass application is twenty-two oh seven Julian Wanda Diaz Lopez. Uh, sir, please proceed.
My name is Michael Bonner, I'm a law firm at Jabba Bomb Word Gaff, representing the applicant Wanda Diaz Lopez, her husband and their business for silver jewelry. Do you need spelling?
No.
This is a, an application for preliminary final site plan approval. The property is in the R five zone, we're seeking continuation of the existing use variance for the retail on the first floor. On the business has existed, this particular business has existed at this location for about three years, but it was a commercial premises before that. We're seeking a new use variance for apartments on the second floor, which are not permitted in the zone. So the applicants proposing a mixed use retail and residential with residential apartments. Excuse me, we're seeking continuation of some existing, both parents and design waivers. Our engineer will explain and we have a planner here to discuss zoning bases. We have an architect here who will describe what the structure is going to look like, but floor plans are, and we also have the applicant here to describe the businesses on the premises and what the anticipated usage would be. So I'd like to introduce, it's like to swear all witnesses at once or do them one at a time.
As they come up, we'll swear them. Good evening, sir. Swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And please give us your names, spell your last name.
Adnan Khan, K H A N.
And would you qualify the witness?
Thank you. Can I go through?
Sure, I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, master's in construction management from N G I T, licensed professional engineer in five states, certified municipal engineer in New Jersey, testified over hundreds of boards, including superior court and federal court as an expert witness.
Okay. Shap the app.
And your.
Thank you. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And Mr., well, he'll be testifying as a civil engineer this evening?
That is correct.
Thank you, sir, please continue. And just for the reference, if you haven't marked or changed those plans, you don't need to mark them as an A one, A two exhibit, just tell us the sheet number you're referring to.
Sure, thank you, these plans are not new.
Yeah, they are the exact.
You're existing, they're colorized or anything? Okay, we'll mark that when he comes up, thank you.
All right, and I would also acknowledge that we received the C M E and the reports and our experts will incorporate comments regarding your, your expert reports into their presentation. And rather than walking through a bunch of questions, I'll just let him show the narrative here and explain his plans.
Okay, I'm on sheet C dash oh one, it's dated April eighth, twenty twenty-two, which is the same plan as we talked about, that is in front of you. As Mr. Bonner mentioned, the site is located in our verse, our five single family residential district. I just want to go over slightly on the location of the site with respect to the zone. Even though our site is located in our five, it's right adjacent to B one zone. So the business is next door is in B one zone and we are in our five zone. However, because the location of the site is in our five, we are requesting use variance because residential units or residential dwellings are not permitted in our, in our five zone. So I also, we have a bulk chart on the cover sheet. And again, we have a planner who will testify in detail about, about these variances and I just want to go quickly over what are the variances and levers we are seeking for this project. So again, as I mentioned, it's a permitted use are the institutional and public uses. Currently, it's a retail, structured retail building and we are proposing, in addition to the retail, we are proposing to residential units on the second floor. Minimum lot area, there is no, the requirement actually is five thousand and for the industrial and the lot depth is fifty and lot width is, sorry, lot width is fifty feet, lot depth is hundred feet. Lot area for corner lots. And this is where we fall into this category is required as six thousand square feet. We are a corner lot, we are at the intersection of Washington and Coolidge. So the requirement for the lot area is six thousand, whereas this site is slightly under four thousand, it's three thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine point nine four square feet, so slightly four thousand, slightly less than four thousand. Lot width requirement is sixty feet, we are forty feet, forty point zero three, and again, it's an existing, pre-existing condition. Lot depth is hundred feet, the existing lot is hundred feet deep and the proposed is hundred feet, so we are conforming with that. The front yard requirement is twenty feet, existing is nine point three feet, that is the existing building. And we are not changing the building footprint, so it's going to be continue to be nine point three feet, which is a pre-existing nonconformity. One side yard is eight feet, existing is point eight feet and it's going to be continued under proposed and it's a pre-existing nonconformity. Rear yard is twenty-five feet, existing is forty-one, proposed will be forty-one and it's a conforming. Density doesn't apply to this, then building coverage twenty percent is allowed in the zone. We are forty point two two percent under existing and under proposed condition, we are reducing it by seven percent. And when I'm going to go over site plan, I'm going to explain where we are getting that impervious.
Or you said building coverage, that's maximum impervious, correct?
Sorry, maximum pervious, yeah. Maximum impervious, sorry, is hundred, forty-five percent.
So.
So the, going back, sorry, yeah, building coverage will remain the same. So the building coverage is twenty percent, existing is forty point two two and we are not changing the building size or the footprint, it's going to stay the same, the coverage.
To clarify, put a cap on it, there are seven existing variances, we're not exaggerating any of them.
That proving one. That is correct. Then there are some waivers and ones.
That's coverage.
Lot cover.
Like picking up some of the sidewalk and grass, grassy area a little.
Okay, as I mentioned, like currently the site is almost hundred percent covered, the building sits towards the front facing Washington Street. The rear yard in its entirety is all paved currently with a curb cut coming in for the parking spaces there. There are no designated parking spaces to say currently in the area in the rear. You can accommodate at least six to seven parking space, parking for cars in the rear area. However, they are not designated. So what we are proposing is, as I mentioned, is like the building on the ground floor will remain the same, the use will remain the same. The front portion of the building is owner occupied as a jewelry store. The rear section is a salon, which operates on an appointment basis strictly. And again, we have the applicant here and she's going to clarify the operations and how the operations work at the site. So we are, yeah, and then the second floor will be the addition of two one bedroom units on the second floor. So we are taking this advantage, we have a D R C meeting with the board professionals and we got comments and based on their comments, we try to accommodate and we try to revise to address as many comments as possible on the site. So originally we were proposing seven parking spaces, tandem spaces, but without green, in other words, utilizing the same footprint of the pavement. However, based on the comment, what we did now is like the rear section, it's about approximately about ten feet in the rear. We are changing that asphalt, we are removing the asphalt area and converting it into the green area. Also, we are proposing a dedicated enclosed trash enclosure to the rear. And the parking spaces, we are proposing five parking spaces for our regular spaces and one is handicap and accessible handicap space. The requirement for the parking is, I'm going to go back to my one, based on the ordinance, the broad ordinance, the requirement for commercial spaces, based on the square footage is eight required. And for the apartments, based on the R S I S for one bedroom unit is one point eight space per unit, which roughly translates to four spaces or two spaces per unit. So what we are proposing, as I mentioned, is five spaces. And the idea here is that these spaces will be dedicated to the residential, the tandem spaces will be dedicated to the residential units, the handicap space that is there will be for business use. If any patron needs handicap accessible space, they can park here. And again, once the applicant will testify, you will see like as far as the parking for the employees and any patrons coming to either of the businesses, there is parking on, on street parking, which they will be utilizing for business purposes. And she will explain like the operations, I'm going to touch a little bit too, as far as the operations and we did a quick traffic impact or traffic study, so I'm going to go over those reports as well. So in addition to these improvements, we are also proposing to widen the curb cut slightly, approximately five feet on Coolidge. And the idea there is so that these tandem spaces, they don't have to maneuver in, because of the parking next to them, they have a free and clear access in and out from the driveway from the Coolidge. So they will be independent as far as coming in and out for each unit. We are also currently, this building is not handicap accessible. So what we are doing, we are taking advantage of this application and proposing a handicap accessible ramp to the front for the building, for the business patrons and coming to the business use on the first floor. Okay, and.
One of the comments was about the type of trees, have you identified them or let there be a condition of approval to agree on?
That will be a condition of approval, but we did showed a combination of some evergreens and deciduous. But again, as part of the condition of approval, we can identify the landscape plan with these species, the type, the size and all that stuff and will work with the board professionals with that and come up with a plan for the landscaping. There was another comment in the report, like the board engineer wants to see the calculations for sewer and water, so we have them incorporated into our plans, so the calculations are listed right here on sheet C dash short two. C dash oh three is a general like the plan for the details, but I want to discuss the top right corner where we have the lighting plan. We are proposing some building mounted light fixtures. There will be one light fixture in the parking area to the rear of the building, which will be mounted that is to shine in the parking, for the parking. However, there, and that fixture is this wall pack that is shown to the right. The other fixtures, we are proposing four other fixtures, front and the side on the Coolidge and Washington Street side, those are those wash down type fixtures, they are fully shielded and downward throw fixtures, actually all of them are downward throw and the idea there is like to eliminate, give an aesthetic appeal to the existing building as well as to shine enough light for any people coming in and out of the businesses or the apartments to safe maneuvering into and out of the building.
And it's just over to adjacent property?
No, they are fully cut off and downward throw fixtures. Here. One other thing, I think one of the other comment we had received from both the planner and the engineer about the type of the parking striping, hairpin is required and again, in the revised plan, we changed them to hairpin type parking stalls. So the variance that they noted in their reports, we are not seeking that variance anymore and the parking striping complies with that.
Can I ask you a question about the parking?
Sure.
The, where the handicap parking is, you're coming on, you're pulling in from Coolidge into the handicap parking, there's a parking space in front of that. How does that person, so you're relying on the restaurant's parking lot next door to get into that space?
No, actually, yeah, that's my mistake. We are proposing the curb all around our property. So there is no access, currently there is no, there is no abstraction from people coming in and out from restaurant or vice versa. So what we are doing is we are closing this through traffic from this property to restaurant by providing curb all around the parking area.
Okay, so if you're in those parking spots closer to the curb, you're kind of locked in until those patrons leave or?
And again, yeah, you're correct, the only thing is like this is just, actually this parking, the only parking that will be locked will be this parking because the handicap accessible, but again, we don't foresee the handicap spot will be used for a long period. And again, the testimony that the applicant will provide about the operations, you can see like it's, I would say if I understand right, it's about seven to eight customers on a daily basis from nine, from ten to five. So again, it's not like a heavily traveled business and the hair salon is appointment only. They are not, they don't open their office until if they have an appointment and then they come during the time and that appointment is there as soon as they're done, both of them leave, both the patron as well as the hair salon tenant.
So which one's the handicap spot?
The one with this wheelchair symbol.
And is there a parking spot in front of there too?
There is a parking spot in front of.
What happens with the dynamic of that, like if the handicap person parks there, then that spot's not using, in effect. In front of the handicap is, is a dead spot.
It's a dead spot or the idea, since we're going to dedicate these parking spaces to residences, if let's say during the business time, I'm assuming most of the time the residents, if they're driving, they're not in the apartment during the time of the operation of the business. And the handicap is again, it's strictly like for handicap accessibility. So usually you don't see like it's been occupied most of the time.
Just one more on the parking, the, so the spots are for the residents, not the customers?
That is correct, except for the handicap.
The handicap and the one in front of it is for the apartment or is it for the business?
This for the apartment too.
Okay, yes.
The, when the applicant comes up.
There's no parking for
Business.
Coming to this business?
That is correct.
None?
The applicant will explain kind of the current usage, how it functions now, what the plan is for the apartments.
Just one question, just again, back to the parking. So one of the four parking places that are allocated to their, you know, to the apartments is in front of the handicap spot?
It is, yes.
Okay, thank you.
As far as the, I think I'm just going through the engineering report and see if there's any other comment.
We covered the sewer and the water.
Yeah.
Talk about site grading, correct, and landscaping and lighting?
That is correct, yes.
Think there were other comments?
I just want to quickly go over our traffic study. Is, so. So the businesses, as they currently stand, they are there. The only additional traffic that will be generated will be because of the two additional residential units that we are proposing at the site. And we did the analysis of how much more traffic generation will be, will have on the peak hourly counts as well as on the level of service of the street. So the A M P tower, which is seven to nine, the, the two, two units will generate two traffics and at the P, in the P M P tower, they will generate three additional traffics. So two in the morning and three from four to six PM on a peak traffic. Times. So again, based on my opinion and this my experience, those. Five additional trips that will be generated out of those two residential units are minimum compared to the capacity of the. Existing store, existing streets as well as the level of service that's currently present. So that is a negligible impact on the streetways based on those two residential units.
I have nothing further.
Any questions from the board?
The proposed spots here are how many? Because I see eight and you're.
Five.
Five.
Two.
Two.
Four. And five. This is like again, by law, like the federal law, we have to provide when accessibility provision.
In order to add the landscape, some of the spaces.
Originally, we had to.
But that's that's a buffer between commercial use and the residence.
One more question on the parking for me anyway. So the people coming to use the businesses are going to park on the street, correct?
Correct.
Isn't that a permit parking area for residents only?
I'm not aware of that, but.
Are you sure it's residents only parking? So customers can't park on.
I'm not aware of that, but I think the applicant will explain it.
In our report, there's a number of design standard waivers that you're looking for. Are you going to discuss those or were your planner? They should, the board should be made aware of all the design waivers that you're looking for with this application.
Okay, so the design waivers we are seeking is like in the residential zone, a garage is required. As currently there is no existing garage in sort of residential use, but we're not proposing any garage on the site. The driveway. And then show and then the carpet, I believe it says the. The maximum drive of it required is a 20 feet. However, what we are proposing is wider in order to accommodate the parking in and out. We are accommodating to, we are proposing 24.6 feet. The but there is a buffer requirement, there is a landscaping requirement. For the parking stalls, if you have certain number of parking within the parking and the property along the property line. We are, we are asking for a waiver for those requirements. Okay, then the parking spaces, I think that variance, I believe. We are proposing nine by 18 parking spaces, all of them. So I think we comply with that requirement. I think originally we were proposing a 22 feet wide, but that's been changed. Now all the parking spaces are nine by 18.
In our report, we we list all the waivers that you're looking for. Maybe you want to just run through the report and. Highlight those for the board and explain why you feel they're justified.
The plan depicts, yeah.
Okay, it's yes. Back a couple, the next page.
Yeah, so I think.
Technical review? Yeah, I just gave you a copy that has the waivers highlighted.
Now on page two, item number three. Under site grading and general comments. It says the plan depicts parking in the front yard setback area and less than five feet to the property line. Which are prohibited by the borough ordinance, the applicant is requesting a waiver of the borough ordinance requirement. So. What we are proposing is since right now, there, there is a continuation of access from a. The property to the adjacent lot. So the parking that we spaces we are proposing is right at the property line. With the curb at the property line and so maybe six inches. So there is a waiver that the applicant is seeking. So instead of five feet distance offset from the property line, we are about six inches from the property line. The aesthetics of the pose.
Where's the front yard? Where you're pointing where the parking lot is, that seat back, where's front of this? It's a corner.
Yeah. Actually, the way the ordinance sees the front is Washington Road.
Right.
Okay, Coolidge is considered as a side yard. As well as the restaurant side is considered a side yard. And and then the one adjacent to the, I mean, the northern side of the property is the rear yard. So so front along Washington side.
So the front already existed, right?
Yes, it already existed, yes.
Doesn't, since it's a corner lot, doesn't this have two front yards?
Does, yes.
Cool it.
The other one is the. Oh, Mike, just to clarify, the parking is supposed to be set 20 feet back from the property line on Coolidge. And he doesn't meet that requirement. You have a 40 foot lot, so. Technically, you know, half of a lot on Coolidge, you're not allowed to have parking based upon the borough standards. He needs a design waiver because he can't meet that requirement. With Jay, just put a number on it, there's two 18 foot stalls. So it's about four feet from Coolidge. Yes.
Can I ask a question? Foley mentioned that parking like Coolidge is permit only. Is that just for residential uses?
Or it's for residents only from 10 AM to 2 PM.
If still it was that way, that's why I'm not sure it still is.
The residents of the apartments who qualify as residents and be able to use would qualify to get permits.
I would say so, but that would be up to police department to give out those permits.
So so if the parking were switched. For commercial uses. And the residents, say we reserve one space each for the residents. And then if the residents wanted another space, they have to go make a permit. Then there will be theoretically three for the business, for the businesses, which are operated largely as appointed over.
I have a question. This is a big issue in a way. You wouldn't allow to have any parking on that street at all on Coolidge if you don't have a permit. Should we look into that further to make sure that's the case or not the case? Before we vote on this application?
Yes, yes, we would. We'd like to continue to discuss the application. It would like for us to hold off and take a look at that.
You can finish it with your professionals and stuff.
Yeah, that's what I'd like to do. And then we can take a look at that.
Okay.
I think that makes sense. I think there might be a better way to set up the parking. Their sign.
Yeah, our planner just.
But. Just because you have a permit, that doesn't guarantee you a spot on the street. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. You just, just.
The police officer probably.
Well, no, the streets would have to be numbered and marked to guarantee you a space.
You're not guaranteed a space.
Yeah, you're just guaranteed not to get towed if you don't have. Not placard.
Probably the reason there's permits required is because there's a, there's not enough parking.
General. Well, I think it also might have to do with the fact that there's a school across the street and a lot of.
It has to do with the commuter, commuter parking. There's plenty of streets that have it where the bus has a. Pick up and drop off people going into the city. It's right across the street. Oh, wow. They slowed up.
Want to adjust the rest of the waivers?
Yeah, I'm reading number five, which is sidewalk is required throughout the site as per the requirement of the borough design standards. The requirement has not been satisfied. The applicant is requesting a waiver of this requirement. The sidewalk in question is like along the building, I believe. We have a sidewalk along both the streets, Coolidge and Washington. And any. Person accessing from the parking to the building or to the apartments, they can walk through the sidewalks. However, we also have an asphalt area between the sidewalk and the building on Coolidge side. So which is a pavement that can be utilized as people walking from the back to the front if needed. So but again, technically, we are requesting a waiver for that requirement. Number six is as per the borough ordinance, a minimum one off street loading berth is required per loading. The applicant is requesting a waiver again, based on the nature of the businesses on site. There is no loading unloading per se. As far as any supplies, except for maybe mail deliveries by FedEx or UPS or USPS type of deliveries. Which usually what they do is like they just park for a minute, two minutes and walk and deliver and go back. So we are asking for a waiver for that requirement. Number seven under A is as per the requirement of broadness, a minimum of 50 feet landscape. Buffer area should be provided when under for where a non-residential use abuts any residential use. No structures actively storage of material or parking of vehicles shall be permitted within the buffer area. The applicant is requesting a waiver of the requirement and the reason, yeah, we are requesting a waiver. The reason is our total lot width is 40 feet. So based on the nature of the lot. It's under current condition. Also, there is no buffer. However, we are trying our best to at least provide some buffer to the residences to the north. So we are, we eliminated a couple of spaces as originally proposed. And conform and transform that into a landscape buffer area. But because of the just nature of the lot or size of the lot. It's difficult to provide a 50 foot buffer on a 40 foot lot on all sites.
Just to clarify, the ordinance calls for. A commercial use adjacent to residential use. So the first lot on Coolidge is residential. So where he's proposing 10 feet, the ordinance requires 50. So in order to meet the ordinance, you would lose. You're basically you lose your parking to comply with the ordinance requirement.
That's correct. Okay, then under sanitary B1, we we did have those calculations on the plan as I mentioned. Same thing with the water. Landscaping and lighting under C1. As per the requirement of the broadness, all sites shall have a minimum 20% of the lot landscape. With not less than 5% of each landscape along the public right of it. The proposed site does not comply with the requirements. And again, the reasoning is the same like that we are requesting those variances because of the size of the lot and because of the. Because of the existing structure, the way it's situated. The building is like we are not expecting the building is going to stay. So with these, all these improvements, it's difficult to provide or to comply with those requirements. And that's why we are seeking that waiver. Okay, C2 in a.
What you're saying is. The waiver for variances are largely related to size of the lot.
Size of the lot and also. Location and also the existing pavement that's already there. So it's currently it's all 100%. So we are trying to soften it up by at least providing landscaping where we can introduce the landscaping. C2 in accordance with the borough ordinance, a minimum of 10% of all proposed parking areas shall be landscaped. About the interior, the proposed site plan does not comply. And I think that relates to the landscaping islands in between the parking spaces. And again, because of a previous explanation, because of the lot of the size. Size of the lot and the parking, the way it's situated. It's, I mean, if you need to provide, we will lose parking space. So. So that's a waiver we are requesting. C3 in accordance with the borough ordinance, the majority of all parking areas shall be screened from public roads by landscape burns. And a low evergreen shrubs. Planting the proposed site plan does not comply. And again, it goes back to the same argument that I previously stated. C4, the specific type of trees and shrubs to be installed. As I mentioned, that we'll work with the board professionals and we will prepare a landscape plan to address that comment. The applicant should further discuss the need for light shields. On the site, again, as I testified earlier, all these light fixtures are downward throwing fully cut off light fixtures. So that addresses that comment. Key. Hours, operations and others, I think whether there's one more waiver. The plan indicates stacked parking space for the parking area. This is not confirmed, in conformance with the borough standards. Which requires 24 feet wide excess aisle for parking areas. The applicant is requesting a waiver from the borough ordinance. And as I mentioned, is again because of to accommodate. Safe maneuvering and parking, we have to propose tandem parking spaces. And that goes back to the narrowness of the lot. So that's why we are seeking that waiver as well. So I think that's pretty much addressed unless. Mr. Cornell, if I missed anything, or you will need further testimony on any particular item.
I think just the the fact that you have stacked parking, that's not permitted by the standard. So that would be another design waiver.
That is correct, yes, yes.
Basically, for the board's information, you have a pre-existing use, pre-existing conditions, they don't comply with the borough standards. You're intensifying this site now by adding the two apartments. And when you look at the design standards for that intensified use, basically you can't have any parking on site. Because of the 50 foot buffer, the 20 foot setback, the stack parking. So in reality, this site doesn't allow you to provide any type of parking on site that meets your borough design standards.
Okay, what about the sidewalks? Do they need a waiver for the sidewalk or not?
Well, technically they do. You're supposed to have sidewalk around the perimeter of a parking lot. So. From a practical standpoint, the spaces that are farthest away from the sidewalk, you're supposed to have a sidewalk adjacent to those. To allow them to walk toward the building. You're not supposed to cross other parking spaces to get to the sidewalk. So there is another interior sidewalk that's required. Is it practical? Is a different question, but technically it is required.
They have the proper sidewalks along the street.
Correct, their existing sidewalks, that's not going to change. So they have the off street, the street sidewalks, they're they're present, yes.
Could be further for. What about that number six, feasibility of shared park? Are haven't been approached the neighborhood.
Just to clarify.
Was that?
Why didn't you tell me that?
I wasn't aware of that.
Well, the applicant.
If you can just test.
About that, yeah.
Just to clarify for the board, during the PRC meeting, the question came up about shared parking. And I think that there was some discussion that there may be a handshake arrangement to allow that business to park on the adjacent property. I think they approached that to try to get something more permanent because just a handshake doesn't address anything.
What business is that?
Fellows. Adjacent.
The owners in the back.
That's why we raised the question and I think there were some discussions with the adjacent owner and.
Yeah, my recollection of PRC was that we were willing to approach and I believe the applicant did and.
Understood. I thought they said they may park there now and then, but in order to get something permanent, he wasn't willing to do that.
About I don't know that for. I think it would be more likely that the restaurant is using our parking lot because they're busy at night. Nobody get out.
Any other questions from the board at all?
I'd went for Jay if I could. Doesn't a business have to provide parking for their employees? Don't you have an ordinance for that?
Exactly, that's why they're looking for a waiver. They're supposed to have eight off street parking places for the business. They have one handicap. They have the four that are designated for the two apartments. So they're not providing. Seven of the required eight spaces.
Just wanted to make sure.
John, John Barry, do you have any questions at all?
Yeah, I do have a couple.
I believe so.
You can all hear you, John.
Yeah.
I see that the you're proposing a traction closure right at the long adjacent residential property line. Is already just kept today for the property?
I'm not 100% sure where it's kept, but my understanding is it's kept behind the building currently. Yeah, the applicant can. That's right. Yeah, the applicant can uh, that's right. Uh, no, we did not.
Thanks, John. Any other questions from the board?
I don't know if you touch on this, there's no new signage proposed, just what's existing.
Um, the architect is going to deal with that, but they're planning on reusing the signage, not making any changes. And would agree to put in a signed application if they were going to reface anything.
I think you can move on.
Thank you.
One, one other question.
If the parking ad exists today, that's where the employees park for that.
Uh, it's only, I believe it's one employee, uh, for the jewelry store. And the owner, and then I think the salon is, uh, my guess is like that they do utilize that space. Yeah. That's something I think it's better answered by the applicant. So because she's more familiar with the day-to-day operations.
Mr. Chairman, one question. Uh, is there lighting, any special lighting now that you're going to have entrance for the residents? I assume that's on the side on Coolidge. Is there any lighting that is, is going to be installed there?
Yeah, the entrance to the apartments, yes. Like we have lighting, as I mentioned, like we have a lighting to shine on the parking area as well as we have, we are proposing lighting along the Coolidge and couple of lights. Uh, they are low intensity, six feet high. Uh, and that is enough for the safety and uh, security of people coming in and out and all walking through around the building.
The entrance for the residence is additional lighting that's not there, man.
It, it is like we are propos, yeah, there, there is, it's not because that will be a new entrance that will be created uh, in the existing building.
Okay, that is. You move on.
Thank you.
You swear you swear in? You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please give us your names, spell your last name.
Pietro Rosato, uh, P I E T R O, R O S A T O. Yes, um, I graduated from NGIT with a Bachelor of Arts in Architecture. Uh, I've been licensed for, uh, since twenty sixteen in New Jersey and uh, um, I am licensed also in New York and Connecticut and uh, I have uh, been to the, the, in many, in many boards and I, I've testimony in front of every boards, many boards. Yes.
Thank you. You're referring to Dr. Setar, or the board's possession, right?
Yes.
Do you have a new exhibit?
Yes.
When we get to that.
Yeah, when we get to that.
Believe renderings, yeah. Okay, so for the project, um, as mentioned before, we are proposing a second story addition uh, with two new apartments, two one-bedroom apartments uh, over an existing commercial space. The apartments, uh, the unit number one will be around seven hundred and fifty square feet. And unit number two of roughly six, seven hundred and sixty square feet. Um, the plan of the apartments, it's mainly um, an open plan concept uh, with a kitchen, living and dining area all in one uh, place and open area. Uh, we have shared bathroom for each one of the apartments and one bedroom with walk-in closets. The the property obviously is on the corner of Coolidge and Washington. Um, we have the entrance to the apartments on the first floor into a stair hall off of Coolidge Avenue. The space, uh, the, the tenant number one, tenant space number one is a jewelry store as mentioned. Uh, with an entrance off of Washington Road and the beauty parlor is going to have the uh, an entrance or has an entrance uh, off of Coolidge Avenue. Okay? That's correct. That's correct. That's the, that's right. That's right. Went to the elevations and then I will show you some renderings. Uh, the elevations are, um, we're going to have basically a stucco finish uh, on the exterior. Uh, with a corner set, cornice at the top, uh, with a parapet. And uh, the cornice is going to be aluminum, black aluminum to match uh, the windows and the on the, all the new windows will also match the existing windows which uh, do already have black aluminum. You know, trim. The other thing uh, that we've briefly mentioned uh, earlier is the signage. The signage, uh, the tenant is uh, proposing to reuse the same signage that they have. Uh, however, it will be relocated roughly, uh, just slightly uh, due to uh, the inclusion of uh, new canopies that we are that project out about three feet from the building. The canopies really will be aluminum canopies. Okay, and uh, we're going to have a cable system suspend, uh, suspending the canopies off the building. The mechanical systems uh, in the um, in the buildings are going to be located on the roof. The condensing units and they're going to be mini split, split systems uh, for both apartments. And uh, the condensing units are, they're going to be on the roof. That's about. There is going to be a parapet wall, yes, as mentioned. So they're not going to be visible.
Council rooms are in the building.
Yes, in the rear of the building and the first, the same location as they are now on the ground floor. No, no laundry. Yes.
Just mark so exhibit A dash one with tonight's date.
Dash one. So this is a, the exterior um, rendering of uh, the side of Coolidge Avenue. Uh, you can see the canopy, you can see obviously the stucco and the, uh, the nice cornice at the top. Um, we're going to also add some uh, wood plank siding uh, off the side to accent and so to trying to change up uh, the uh, the facade a bit and to break the facade to have a little bit more dynamic or aesthetic, aesthetically more pleasing. And this is the, uh, it's a, one of the signage that we're going to reuse uh, for the entrance to the beauty parlor. Okay? And this here is the entrance, the new entrance to the uh, to the apartments, to into the stair hall uh, of Coolidge and going up into the apartments. Okay? The second rendering is.
Yeah, I marked A two with tonight's date as well. Thank you.
This is a, the second rendering, which you kind of see both corner and the, the entire corner of the building. This is Coolidge, this is Washington. Uh, again, we're uh, using the same similar language, stucco, uh, wood planks, um, accent panels. And uh, black trim around the windows, um, and uh, the black aluminum coping at the top. Uh, you can see the ramp, uh, that uh, Mr. Callan had mentioned, uh, from, you know, going into the um, jewelry store. And again, another canopy right in the front, right above the entrance. The color is shown, that's correct.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Chairman. Apartments upstairs, one entrance and exit.
Yes, yes.
Need requirement?
Yeah, it's pretty standard. Yeah, yeah. And that was made requirements and code, yes.
And the canopies on the Coolidge side, are they within the property line?
Yes, yes.
You know, by how much?
How much, I'm sorry, how much from the property line to the
To the can.
To the canopy. You know, I'm not sure. I don't have a site, a survey with me, but. Yes, and six feet, so it's about three feet from the property line. Well, six feet to the building and then three feet, it projects out three feet. So from the edge of the canopy to the property line is be another three feet. Yes. No, not shared bathroom, one bathroom each. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not an in-suite bathroom. No, no.
Any other questions at all or? John Barry, do you have any questions?
You might not have heard before, but they said there will be new washers and dryers at either you. Will not be. There will, yeah, none.
Yes, um, you can see here, uh, how we're proposing some uh, grass area to diminish impervious coverage uh, of the a hundred percent, you know, impervious coverage that we have.
That's just on the Coolidge side.
On the Coolidge side, yeah, and it's just a tiny bit on the Washington side.
Do you have a, a general idea approximately width and length of that, that?
Six feet. It's, it's around six feet, a little bit more than six feet by probably around twenty, twenty-five feet.
Is there a minimum requirement for an apartment for the ordinance?
No, I don't believe the ordinance provides a minimum. I think it's.
Yes.
Yeah, that was the question.
I believe it's seven hundred and we're proposing seven fifty and seven sixty.
Thank you. Introduce yourself and tell you what she does.
Ma'am, I need to swear you in. You swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. And uh, just give us your name, spell your last name, please.
I'm Wanda Diaz Lopez, W A N D A D I A D hyphenated L O P D.
Thank you. Please continue.
Okay, good evening. For those who, I'm going to read a little note because I've never gone through this. So for those who don't know me, my name is Wanda Diaz Lopez. Honor of Priscilla Jewelry on Washington Road. To give you some information about me, my family, and I have been living in Portland several for over twenty years. All of my three daughters went to Servile Public School. My husband and I um, have been in jewelry business for twenty-five years. This new store that uh, we opened three years ago, it has been a positive addition to the community. Ow, uh, owning our business in Servile has been a pleasurable experience and we enjoy serving the community we live in for the last two decades. The jewelry store provide a new service to town and we plan to continue to do so as long as we are able to. Our uh, operation, the days and hours are ten to five, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday and Saturday. Close Wednesdays and Sundays. So this was perfect for me because I'm off. Um, the hairdresser only works, is in regular, she only works by appointment. Sometimes she closes on Monday and work by appointment whenever she has an appointment. We are, both have one employee each, which is me and her. We don't have any other, I don't have any other employees under me. I just work this store and she works the same way. I tried through the pandemic to work to um, appointment, but now they're coming in, you know, uh, I see between five to six customers a day. So slow, you know, during the summer so slow. And on weekends, ten to ten customers a day, not so bad. I've never had the parking lot, um, a full, because they come in, change a battery on the way, change a watchman on the way. There's nothing, if someone's going to buy jewelry, they don't take long. They know what they coming for earrings. So whatever, it doesn't take that long. Less than ten minutes, I'm out of with a customer. Never had an issue with parking. With those parkings that you're referring to the front or back. Never had an issue with a customer. They wait because it doesn't take long for whoever is in the back or front to get out of there. Never had an issue with my neighbors either, through parking or that they're overloading like bellows, nobody goes there or my neighbors. I, I don't, nobody has brought that to my attention that they have an issue with it. And what else I was going to say.
Talk about deliveries to your business and to the hairdresser. What is it typically like FedEx, UPS, whatever?
FedEx, but it's not, it's over like every three months or so. And we have another store in Brooklyn where, which I get my, most of the stuff there and my husband brings it over. This is our second store. So one in New York for twenty-five years and this is home. So so he brings, I don't get any, any delivery. She gets the hair coloring once in a while. But it's over three to four months that she gets the parts and they deliver to me.
At this point, um, members of the board have talked about permitted parking. Um, are you willing to carry this to another meeting so that we can look into that possibility?
Absolutely. I didn't even know that. Yeah, of course, of course we could carry.
Any questions uh, from the board? I have a couple, um. You, you talk about you have appointments, you know, salon person. Now, I guess they're trying, I would hope they're trying to grow their business. Do they have an opportunity of adding another salon person in there? So you have two and start bringing in more people in the back?
Same question. She pays me rent. And she works only by appointment. She has a second job too. So she has a clientele and so they call her and she comes to the hair and she goes.
So she doesn't have any walk-ins that ever come around?
She doesn't have walking. She only works by appointment.
And as I mentioned before about her growing her business where she has a second job, maybe she will hire someone else to do the salon business and she would just do her regular job and maybe get another slot. So the question is, how do you control that? We have no control if she wants to grow her business and change her um, way of doing business right now. That would increase the traffic or the parking problems.
I understand. I've been there three years and she um, rented for me two years ago. So she's been working like that for two years. So I cannot tell you, you know.
Yeah, but we can't just go by what she's done in the past, um.
Yeah, she's never expressed a desire to expand.
She never.
Employee, do anything other than.
Nothing like that.
Appointment.
Just by appointment.
How often, on a weekly basis, would you, you say she has appointments typically?
Only twice a week she has appointments.
Be there, here, somebody else runs, you got a whole totally different kind of business.
Oh, no, I'm there.
Just kind of made that they could bring this forward and there's the, the parking is like, you're not concerned about the parking, saying that there's never been a parking problem. We don't know that for a fact. But but now, now you're going to create residents and people are going to have residents and with that they have a concern with, with no part, there is no.
And, and we have.
And, and we have agreed that we're willing to carry this to another meeting to explore the idea of this permitted parking. In terms of someone else coming in to replace her tenant, she has no reason to believe this current tenant is going to leave and, and right, but well, I mean, we could speculate about anything, you know. But it's a pretty small space and it's designed for a hairdresser, a single person does it. Apparently she's very happy there. She's been there for two years and there hasn't been an issue.
You have a problem with parking too with the residents of your apartments. I know people that you're married, they each have a car and someone might have a truck to go to work and come back. So that's three cars possibly and you can't control those kinds of things for your residents.
But you have a one bedroom apartment. You're not.
Yeah, yeah, a married couple and someone that has a truck that goes to work, but he's got another car to use during the weekends. I mean, those things can pop up and you have no control of those things.
But she can also control that by who she rents to and tell them they can only have one car. They can, you only have one reserved space. You have to figure the rest out for yourself. I mean, if we're, if we're, you know, we're talking about the possibility of somebody have three cars, we can also talk about her putting a restriction on lease. You can only have one car. You know, there are, there are multiple scenarios here that we could argue from. I mean, not that we're arguing, but she can as the landlord.
What happens if the person brings two cars in? They're supposed to have one. Throw them out. I mean, it's very difficult to control and to enforce. Any other questions from the board here?
Yeah. Where do you, Ms. Lopez, where do you park when you go to work? In the parking spot now?
No, yeah, because there's no issue.
Going forward, you plan to park in the street, correct? I assume. And going forward, those are gonna be for your people in the apartment till you plan.
I will get a permanent parking. I'm a resident of Portland, so.
It would be for the people live on the street, the parking.
I live five minutes away.
John Barry, do you have any questions?
Just to revisit my earlier question, where do you keep the garbage at the property today?
It is right in front of the utility room. I have the, a door, which is the utility. That's where I keep them, right next to, right next to the salon.
Okay. With that area that you say all of it has with your proposed issue of the apartment?
To school, to function when you have the apartment.
What?
Area added because of the ordinance, had a requirement?
There is no ordinance requirement for the size, but I think based on our conversation, they generate very minimum garbage. So what we're doing is like, again, it will be the way they handle their garbage, they're going to continue. And this refuse area is for the residents most of the time. Unless like you can put your stuff in there too, but the refuse area is for residential.
What, what exactly is the concern, Mr. Barry?
Figure out where the garbage is today and whether the place to be stored today would be adequate in the hypothetical future where there's still parking there. Would we need that garbage enclosure or did it cause a neighborhood residence?
Yeah, I think you have, you have used the existing borough garbage bin. You don't have a designated area for, you just have a garbage can basically. Is that correct?
Yes.
You see, you put it out.
Two, but I, I just put one in the utility because I don't use two.
Right.
I just use one, so I don't want to leave it out.
You don't, it's proposed that you're gonna have a designated refuse area. Now you just have a borough garbage can that you utilize.
Yeah, but he has a space for it. Like it's not on the street or it might be.
It's adjacent to the building.
If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Khan, can you put up your site plan and, and Ms. Diaz, could you just show us, point out to us where you presently have the garbage? Yeah, he'll get the site plan for you. Just, you know, where it is today, where you normally keep your garbage.
My understanding it's like in this area somewhere.
This is the, this is, so it's, it's around here. This is the utility room?
Oh, so there's, there's like a little notch in the building on the.
Like on that notch of the, that's where I keep them.
Okay.
Yeah, they have right next to the, it's the door that is the air conditioning or.
Okay. And right next to it on the wall is the electric meter, right? That little notch. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
And the new area.
Yeah, the new area we are proposing on the northern side and fully like it's vinyl enclosure. And again, we are proposing containers as well. But mostly this is for residential, like one for, I mean recycle and solid waste. And they are enclosed in a six feet wide, six feet high vinyl trash enclosure.
I, I guess the borough would be picking up the, the trash and recyclables.
That is my understanding, yes.
Any other?
Follow, but I don't understand where John's going. Is it possible to, that little notched in area, maybe create an enclosure there and move all the trash to that area and then avoid it against the neighbor's property?
It will do two things. One, like it will eat up the area for the handicap accessible aisle. We need for van accessibility as well as it will impact the parking, the one parking that's facing to the front.
Okay. Since we're going to carry this, look at the permit parking, we can take another look at.
One more question for you and I promise that's it. Can you go back to the drawing ahead up there of the building? The big picture of the building. That one, that's, I just, in that photo, there's the crosswalk there. Is there a crosswalk at the location, location or is it just for the picture?
No, no, there is an existing walkway. You're talking about this walkway, right?
No, the crosswalk in the street. Is that there in? There? This is a school. I thought it might have been there, so. Because state law says you can't park within 20 feet of a crosswalk. So that's really gonna eliminate your parking on the street even more.
I have a question.
There is a crosswalk.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, there's a crosswalk.
20 feet. So it takes a lot of your parking on the street up.
Have a question. What do you use the second floor for now?
There's nothing.
There's no second floor there. Okay.
It's a continuation of the system you said for the retail on the first floors of commercial businesses. That's existing. It's a new.
He's actually gonna modify the building and go up the store. Okay, thank you. We, we have.
Any one more questions?
You have any other testimony?
We, we have a planner, but since we're going to be looking into a couple of issues and his testimony may change, I don't think it makes sense to put him on tonight.
Okay.
Do you want to look into the parking and all the other issues that have been raised? Everybody wants to do what you can.
Well, I, I guess at this point we'd open up to the public. If there's anybody from the public out there who wishes to speak.
Evening ma'am. I need to swear you in. You swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And give us your name, spell your last name.
Darlene Murrow, M R O V E.
And your address, please.
11 Coolidge Avenue.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
So as you can imagine, I'm here on every, every point that you guys have pointed out tonight. I am the resident at 11 Coolidge. My family has owned that house for 30 plus years since the seventies. Parking is already a problem without any additional business from the new addition, parking, whatever. Pardon me, I'm new to this. I've been almost hit coming out of my driveway from the parking lot from the beauty parlor already in existence and jewelry owners. I have the most property footage in the ranch living there, so I have to battle for a parking spot. If I didn't have a driveway, I wouldn't have anywhere to park. This is before any addition. I don't see how you can even entertain an application such as this with no existing parking. I'm at the corner of Arlett with Bellows in between. There is just, it's ludicrous. The amount of parking and traction and traffic that has been increased in the borough over the last 30 years. And we, we have the addition of commuters that we had, do have the commuter sign. This is no parking from here to corner. We had a problem with commuters coming from New York taking our spaces. So I'm the first house on the, on the street and it's just backing farther and farther up. And I just asked the board to use that in light of the, the parking. I'm not a lawyer. I'm a veterinarian. Come to me with your pet questions. So, but I don't know the logistics, everything. I'm just coming from a concerned taxpaying citizen for you to consider the parking situation as you have done tonight. Thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am. Just to be clear, you're, you're the house next to this property?
Yes.
On the same side?
On the same side, 11 Coolidge directly next to it where I already have their, their participants parking in front of my property to go into the beauty store, to go into the jewelry store. They're parking in front of my house. With, it's gotten. Since it's increased, it has magnitude, the parking problems have increased. Since, since the Priscillas have been in existence, my parking problems have existed, like have gotten worse. I'm 44 now. I mean, in the seventies, my parents were there when it was even Simcoe's Pub. And then we lived through Bellows and now we have the latest addition.
What was it so ago before?
Our beauty salon.
That's it?
And then he passed away due to cancer.
And how many, were you, do you have parking problems before?
We had a slight few, but now it's getting horrendously worse.
If I may ask you, so you've been living there a long time and you're familiar with Bellows. When Bellows is busy, so evenings, weekends and such, is their parking lot?
Bellows, I know he's here. I've seen him. He's been very receptive to our comments. He's always, any, there was a big time when I had trash in my lawn due to, due to the bar coming over. He's taking care of them and I don't really have a problem with the bar anymore because he's very been very proposed to, to take concerns seriously and do something about them. I don't know anything about like Priscillas and the beauty parlor with parking concerns. That's my main thing I'm here tonight for.
But just kind of a simple question. When, when you've seen Bellows, when they're busy, their parking lot's full.
Correct.
There's no extra spaces for these.
They drift over to my house, but it's, it's rare and far between now. But now I have permanent people coming in like picking up the parking spots as well. So everything is going up the block. And I, like I said, if I didn't have a driveway, I work here regular hours. I work ER. I'm in a job from 11 to 11 at night. Sometimes there's no parking available in front of my house. And I have to park in my driveway. Thank goodness for the driveway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What, what time of day are the parking problems?
During the day when I'm home. Cause like I, I, I work rotating shifts.
So what you're saying is the applicant gets five or six people a day over the course of the day from 10 to 5. Well, I'm asking questions. I have the right to do that. That's how this works.
I understand that. Thank you.
And the hairdresser who has two to three appointments a week, somehow those.
Because hairdressers take time.
Everyone, just one person speak at a time. Let him finish his question and he won't talk over you. We'll make sure. That's okay. I know that you're a little nervous first time here.
All of that to that level of clientele.
I, I have seen problems.
And you, and you've got out and asked them that they're, you know, they're from Priscillas or not.
I, I have the large trade window. I can see them walking into the, the structure.
While they're at work.
When I, I work a rotating shift, sir. So I work 11 to 7, but rotating shift. So some days I'm home, I'm home today. So I can make, make certain my, my concerns are heard.
Any other comments?
No, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Good evening, sir. Please raise your right hand. You swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, it does.
And give us your names, please spell your last.
Dennis Bello. I own Bellows Family Restaurant.
And just spell it for the record.
Pardon?
Just spell the last name.
B E L L O.
Thank you, Mr. Bello. Please continue.
Basically here, a very nice young lady. I just don't know her that long, but I've been in Bellows 27 years and parking is a problem. And my only concern is that I just let everybody know, if you have any questions for me about parking, then I'm here to answer any question you may have before you decide to make your decision. So I'm not here to complain or to try and stop anybody from improving their situation. I'm just here to answer a question if you have that question about parking. Because I'm an expert in parking. We know that we had to redo my parking lot in order for me to expand and I went out of my way to make sure everything was done safe. And now what had happened is I had a, an inspection from my insurance company. And they came to me and said that you can't allow two parking lots to face each other. Well, it just so happens that never had this problem in the last 27 years. But now with having two businesses, their parking lot faces my parking lot. So like you said, if someone's parked in that front spot and someone's in the handicap, that guy in the front's gotta either jump up backwards over the car or go forward through my parking lot. My insurance company wants me to put up a barrier. They don't want two parking lots to face each other for insurance purposes. So now I have to put up a barrier and I didn't say nothing to the young lady yet. My inspection was two weeks ago. So now my insurance company is saying if somebody's in that back parking lot, whether they're in a hair salon, whether they're in the jewelry store or they're upstairs in an apartment, if they go through my lot and hit somebody, my insurance company will not cover it. So now I had to put up a barrier. So now with her parking situation, if she has someone in the front and the handicap in the back, they gotta back out into Coolidge Avenue to let that person get out. But the person in the front has to wait for the other person to leave. So I don't know if that will have any kind of a bearing on what's going on here or his plans or whatever he drew up on a picture. But that's what I'm forced to do now for insurance purposes. Cause apparently in the past, what I think was posh car wash where they had that part, they had the car wash and then next door was a place where you get your oil changed and somebody came through the oil thing, hit somebody on the other side, a big lawsuit. And so ever since then, insurance companies now are getting very strict on what they do. So I, I just happen to have a, an inspection by my insurance company and I, I've had them 20 years, but now they come out and they, they tell you these different things. So I don't know if that's gonna make it into a something.
I don't know if you heard all the testimony by the applicants professionals, but their plan is to put a curb at the end of their properties.
And that will also cause you to have a problem because that car parks in the front. Then they're not gonna be able to get out.
Right. The ten spaces will be assigned at this point to the apartments.
Well, just to let you know, she's a nice lady. She's a nice lady. When she stands in her, when she stands in her jewelry store, she looks out the front window and you see the school, right? You see a school across the street. And if you look out the left window, you see the sidewalk on Coolidge Road. But you don't see nothing on the right. So it's, it's a brick wall. It says Priscilla Jewels. It's a brick wall. Well, five out of 10 cars that come to your jewelry store that you don't see them, you see them walk in the front door, they park in my lot. Now don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to be a wise guy, but if you buy somebody a membership to the gym and they're going to the gym to walk 10 miles on a treadmill, they're gonna park in a handicap spot right next to the front door. That's what people do. So when they pull in my lot, I see Priscilla Jewels, they park right under the facility. And I don't say nothing to her. I don't, I don't say no, let it go, you know? But that's what they park now. Now if you're gonna put two more apartments up there with two, three, four more cars, now like she said, she's not. Now, like she said, she's not going to never, she'll never get in on her drive. In fact, if she parks in front of her house. That parking spot on the right side, you're either going to hit her parked car or you're going to hit the pole. So parking is a problem, so I know they're going to park in my lot. I'm telling you right now, I can, if I could bet on it, I'd make a lot of money.
Do you think any of your patients use our parking, parking lot?
Uh, people use my parking lot to go to the school, they use it to go over to the.
No, you think your patients use.
No, no, they will not use it because she has a sign, she has a sign in her parking lot saying, parking Priscilla Jewels, all others will be towed away.
Okay, and none of your people have a parking.
They were not taken, no, no, never, never. In fact, that's another reason why I'll put the brick wall up so that they don't park back there, but there's never any space anyway. Because you have, you have two, two hairdressers and her is three, you're a lot of fill before it even comes. And I'm not trying to be vague, I'm just trying to be honest about it, you know, they're going to park in my lot. Now if they pull out of my lot. Like what happened a couple of years ago with the asset down Route nine, they said, well, you know, where'd you come from? I came from this here. Restaurant on Route thirty-five, boy, I came into somebody's house. So somebody comes out of that apartment drunk and they go out of my driveway. And they hit somebody, they're going to say they came from Bellows, they're going to say, I came to my friend's house, I'll sue my friend, sue Bellows. Two weeks ago, one of our police officers stopped a guy on Washington Road. And he said, yeah, he was drunk, and he said, where'd you come from? Bellows. He's, oh, you know Anthony? Do you know Anthony? He goes, oh yeah, I'm good friends with Anthony. He said, no, you, you don't know Anthony, Anthony don't know, but if you're, if I say I'm from Bellows, I'll get away with it. You know, so they're going to, they're going to say things anyway. That's why we have to have cameras and all the driveways showing places and place. And when they come and when they go. So parking is always going to be a problem no matter where you go. You know, so if you guys have any questions for me, I mean, I was, like I said, I want everyone to be happy, I want everyone to be, if you could build a seventy-five story building. Then I'll have a lot more customers, you know, build it up, but you wouldn't know, you know, I have a pop any parking. And they do park in my lot now. So, I mean, it's, it's, and she, and she don't know that because I never said anything, I don't care. They park, they walk in, especially if they're older people, you know, I, I try to let them, I make them walk all the way from the back to the front, you know. But.
Any questions for Dennis at all or?
If you have questions for me, I mean, I do everything but comply, I mean, Andy knows me very well, I do everything by the book and I want to be, you know. Wellful, right Joan, you know me, uh, so I, I want everyone to be happy and I'll do, I'll comply with anything you want. But somebody has already come to me and said, can you give up three or four of your spots? And I said, no. By law, you know, I can't give up us, that park in my expansion was based on my parking and I had to buy that lot. Expand it, rezone it in, in order to do what I do now, so I can't give up more parking spots. So. I just want to bring your attention, I'm willing to do whatever I have to do to help everybody, whatever you guys need, I'm there for you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Now.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Have you a question for me?
No, you said, you said, you said a lie.
I'm fixing it up, okay. Okay.
You can continue and see what we're going to do at this next point.
So, so we plan to, we're going to hold the planner until we look at some of these issues that have been raised.
So, um, no notice needs to be.
Yeah, would you hold them? Um. So I know we're carrying Ushemi and Lopez to next month. Do we have anything else on the agenda or we have room for this?
We have two conflicts next month.
Oh.
Our architect and our planner.
So you want to carry it to September?
I have to go to September, okay. I'll send you, I'll send you a consent to extension.
Thank you. Yeah. So, um, for Mr. Bello, Ms. Rowe, we're continuing the application, they want to go look at some of the issues we've raised tonight, so. We won't be here next month, August, we'll be here on the night of September twenty-eighth. And they're not going to send new notice or anything, so this is your notice that it's going to be September twenty-eighth, okay?
Right, you don't have to read that.
No, you don't need to read notice.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Presentations finished, we go.
We have, um, resolutions.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have two resolutions from last month, the first one is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, the first is case number twenty-two dash zero eight, that was the dis wireless co-location on Two Goan Avenue. Um, resolution's been prepared, circulated to the board, if there's no questions or revisions, we can adopt that resolution.
Make a motion on this resolution?
Remove the resolution be adopted?
Is your second? Ellen Ropel?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Foley? Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
And the second resolution is application twenty-two dash thirteen, uh, the Patel residence seventeen Sherwood, it was for new family home. Um, again, resolution compare, prepared, circulated to the board, if there's no questions or revisions, we can adopt that resolution.
Make a motion?
I move the resolution be adopted?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes, and, um. Adoption of minutes from last meeting? Any questions on them? If not, have a motion? Is your second?
Second.
Oh, everybody's in favor, say yes, yes he is.
Yes.
Any questions from the board at all?
I got a question, yeah. The, um, it's like a new temple on Irston Road and I noticed that.
Mosque, mosque.
Mosque, that was, uh, Embrugge's law firm. Is that like coming before, I mean, they cut, they, they cut that old. Or, that is coming before us.
Mr. Chairman, I can.
Aren't they supposed to come before us before they start any?
It's almost done.
Two different issues, they submitted an application for this board, it went to technical review, it was. Severely incomplete concerning your ordinance requirements, so they were told to come back, address the concerns and come back to technical review. That was a few months ago, we, we haven't heard from them, so that's the status before the board. If someone is taking trees down without approval, which they are, that's an enforced, that's an enforcement issue through the borough, so that's something that through the zoning officer. They would have to enforce, and I believe that there's been some involvement with that.
And it's been there, good, mm.
But, but as far as the application, they're looking to basically demolish the entire site and construct a large, I think it's a forty thousand square foot structure.
Forty thousand square foot?
How many levels?
Multiple levels.
Oh my gosh.
So, so they're going to take down the old law office.
Plus adjacent lots.
And plus the two lots on the sides.
What that's going to do for traffic?
Wow.
Joe never.
I mean, only as I saw that's because they're, they're paving, so I was stuck in traffic, I look over and it's like, it's a clear.
Yeah, we've had the police phone test.
Yeah, the other, the one on, here by check, the temple, it's. Creates a lot of traffic issues too.
Like that one's gotten, I think that one's gotten better, I don't know if the.
People have left there.
Yeah, it's not as busy as it used to be, but now it's like, it's going to be another, it's a more issue, I guess.
Sorry.
Any other questions at all? John, Tom, anything? I'm making a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. John, take care. John Barry. All right, bye.
You know what I kept thinking, this guy, he must be like.